I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes on January 3rd of this year? Second, please.
The second.
Diane. Any corrections, amendments, additions, subtractions? Hank.
Oh, specifically like the end we wanted in non-public to be changed.
The what?
The reason we wanted it in non-public to be changed.
Would you put down the reason? I have to open it up here.
Hang on a second. Yeah.
Would you write down the specific reason?
For the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee.
No?
No. Sorry.
Would you like it to read?
Well, what she said, because right now it says to discuss Henry Boyle. And nobody's ever gone in non-public to discuss me before. I'm thinking, there must be an old draft.
In the motion to discuss Henry Boyle.
Do you leave it over at the Senate?
Oh, do I still have it?
Oh, exactly.
Yes, probably do.
I see.
Yeah.
She's got it.
Okay.
She got it?
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
An ill period in there and it will help.
All right. Any other amendments or corrections? That was just a small picture on her face.
You know, this is what she's...
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended? One, two, three, four, five, six in favor? Against? Abstentions? One abstention, Ginny. Motion passes. Six, zero, one. I'm going to start the correspondence board around. It has substitution reports for, I believe, the last two weeks. Yep, the last two weeks in it. Can you start that around? Combinations, good news?
I have some.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to announce that the Mountain View Middle School Geography B winner was Christian Seka. He took, the geography which took place on January 11th. He took the written test and we had it in the mail before last week's snowstorm, so we'll be waiting to hear if he makes it to the regionals. The finalists included Chase Dearborn, Alom Aldicater, Peter Stekowitz, Ayla, I'm sorry, Ayla Wormser, Matthew Evans, Connor Hager, Isaac Wilson, Lauren Foster, and Rebecca Clifford. And I also wanted to let you know that Brianna Delorme and Theodore Urbannick were the winners of the school pirate contest, and that is a contest through Scholastic in which they have to submit a piece of writing, and they were selected as winners for our school.
Excellent. Any comments?
I do, I wanted to recognize the future business leaders. They had five students come in the night of the budget hearing. We had 28 children and they were there from 7:00 to 11:00. And we played some games, we were in the gym. It seemed like the children had a good time, and I wanted to remind people that we will be here again for the deliberative session, beginning about 9:30. Also, Jamie Grattan was hit by the storm as well. She had planned to Skype with NASA on Friday, and that Skype has been rescheduled till June. And when I get more information, I will bring it forward to you.
Excellent. Stacy, you want to do Peggy?
Yeah, I'm just going to report Peggy wasn't able to be here today, so she wanted me to share some good news from Maple Lab. She says their student council is collecting gently-used books for a city school in Pennsylvania. This was something they had done last year as well. Their goal is to collect 1,002 books. Each child who donates a book puts their name on the book, on a book plate that will go in one of their donated classrooms, in their donated book. So if anybody has books that they would like to donate to an elementary school, you can certainly drop them off at Maple Lab. She said that Maple Lab students will also be participating in the Fisher Katz reading incentive. Students need to read five books before March 11th, and they'll receive two tickets to one of the Fisher Katz home games. The school with the highest participation rate has a chance of winning, first prize is $3,000, and second and third prize is $1,000. So just two little good things that Maple Lab is doing to keep reading going.
Excellent. Any other comments? Ginny?
I would like to commend the two young men, students at our high school that stood up and spoke at the budget hearing. I was really impressed that they would not be intimidated by a bunch of adults and stand up and speak their mind. I thought that was really cool. And I also attended a very fast-paced boys' basketball game that they won on Friday. It was a fun game to watch.
Excellent. Any other combinations, good news? All right, we'll jump into public comment. On public comment, you need to announce your name and your address, and you have to be Gofftown residents to talk. So public comment is open. Any public comment? Name and address first.
Sure. Hi, my name is Kynna Abraham, and I live at 727 Mass Road. The school district was a huge factor when purchasing this home. Please note, I did not write this letter, but I offered to read it. I do know what I'm about to read is fact. The reason I am reading this and not a staff member is because they are so fearful of retaliation. It is my hope that you will hear their plea and respond accordingly by looking into how things are run at Mountain View Middle School. Their main concern focuses on a part of the mission statement they feel needs to be greatly improved, as it directly impacts the climate and culture at Mountain View Middle School in a negative way. The mission statement states beliefs. We believe in providing a welcoming environment where all students and staff feel valued, safe, and are treated with respect, dignity, and equity. There are many instances where staff members have not felt valued, safe, or treated with respect, dignity, or equity. In fact, the staff members who are attending this board meeting want you to know that working at Mountain View Middle School has become quite stressful, and that many of our staff members are too fearful even to appear before you tonight. In asking the question, "What is it like to work at Mountain View Middle School?", the answers range from oppressive, mean-spirited, vicious, micromanaged, toxic, unsupportive, vindictive, fearful, intimidating, et cetera. Staff members are reporting that visits to their physicians have increased, as many are now taking medications for anxiety, depression, and lack of sleep due to the harmful environment they must work in. In fact, many of them have hired attorneys that they will feel safe and protected. Over the past five years, the staff turnover rate has approached 75 percent. This is also a clear indication that something is not right at Mountain View Middle School. What was said at those exit interviews, do you know? You can be quite sure that these staff members left due to the hostile, unsupportive environment. Some of them who have left included a Teacher of the Year, as well as many beloved staff who had been longtime Gofftown employees. When teachers have a positive environment in which to work, the climate and atmosphere reflects that and they do not leave. This is not the case at Mountain View Middle School. It does cost the district money to continuously train new teachers. If we did not care for our students and our school, we would not be appealing to help us change the culture and climate. In one instance, before the holiday break, some teachers were given permission to show holiday movies. Some were denied the same request. It is not the teachers who suffered, it was the students. The students were aware and asked, "Why does that team get to watch the movie and we are not allowed?" Not only is this unfair, it's micromanaging professionals who reflect as a lack of respect and confidence that the staff knows how to do their job and always looks out for the best interests of each and every child. As you were made aware at the last school board meeting, the teachers won their grievance. No longer does each and every homeroom teacher have to go outside and retrieve their students at the 8:25 bell. Since this ruling was issued, the students are no longer expected to line up by teams and are encouraged to quickly enter the building. What results is a large mass of hundreds of children running to get to the entrance. This is very unsafe. For the past 20 years at Mountain View, there has been four teachers on morning duty, and this practice still stands today. The teachers have had a safe system, the teachers have had a safe system for 20 years, where the four on duty are positioned at various points upon entering the building. The students lined up by teams and were directed into the building safely, one team at a time. Many teachers have talked about the major safety concern, but nothing has changed to make morning arrival safe again. This is retaliation at the staff at the expense of the students. Teachers have also reported humiliating experiences where they have been yelled at, treated unfairly with a lack of dignity, respect that they deserve. This unsupportive environment directly impacts the students as these examples of inequity, lack of respect, and quite frankly, bullying reflect. The SAU also has a mission statement, and under the school board roles, it states, "To be open and encouraging of district employee dialogue and discussion." In support of that mission statement, and on behalf of the staff, they are imploring and pleading with you to discuss these issues at Mountain View Middle School amongst yourselves as the board. Have things gotten better or not? Many of the staff members would like to be able to, would be asked by school board members, I apologize, please let me start over. Many of the staff members would like to be asked by school board members about the climate and culture of our school. Our mission statement is not serving the staff at Mountain View Middle School. Thank you for your time. I do have a copy for all of you to read.
I'm going to make a correction. I don't know where you got the 75 percent turnover rate. None of our data supports that, so if you want to submit that to us so we can try to figure out how you came up with 75...
Sure.
...I'll gladly review that.
Sure, I will.
And as for the current grievance that you won, we simply went back to the way, the way that things were before the change was grieved. So I'm not sure how you can say that's retaliation, when you grieved the way we wanted to do it, you won, and we just simply went back to the way before. So I guess that's confusing why you call that retaliation.
Okay. The way it was before was the children were lined up individually by their teams, and it's not that way anymore.
Okay.
So that's where I came up with that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks. Any other public comment?
Donna Bernard, 65 Riverview Park Road. Just for the new members of the board, I'd like to let you know that the first time I brought this issue to the board was in a non-public session in November 2008, and I brought it up with the superintendent at least three to six months before that. So we're now two, two and a half years out.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Anita Shaput. Live on 127 Eastern Barton Road in Gofftown. I have a concern with getting the help that a child needs, especially if they have an IEP. My child does have an IEP. I had to fight tooth and nail to get him the assistance he needed because there was no one here to help. And now that he's finally getting some of the help he needs, I'm wondering what other children have I pulled away from them receiving the help that they need? My son comes home discouraged almost every single night. He does not want to go to school. He does not like the school system. I went through this school, I went through all, well, I went through two of the schools in town, graduated out of this high school, and I feel that at first, the assistance that my son was getting when he was in Maple Avenue was great, and now that he's moved up to Mountain View Middle School, the support and whatnot that he deserves as a child and I deserve as a taxpaying parent is not there. And I feel that something needs to be done about the staffing and supporting the teachers in a better way.
Well, actually, what I'm going to do is, I will let Stacy ask a question, but I will suggest that if you're not happy with it, and because the IEP is not something we should be out here discussing publicly, I would strongly recommend there is a process where you can appeal it and actually discuss it with the superintendent, and ultimately come to the school board in non-public for it. Or if you really want to do it in public, we can do it in public. But I do stress that you take advantage of that, and I'll let Stacy ask a quick question.
No, that was my question.
Oh, okay.
Have you spoken first with the case manager with administration?
I'm meeting with his IEP caseworker on February 1st.
And that would be the process to follow.
And it's just, you know, I've been fighting this since the beginning of the school year, and I know it's not her fault. I just know that we need to get better support in here for all of our students, and I shouldn't have to come to any special meetings where I should be able to say, "Okay, my son's not getting the help he needs. Could somebody please assist?"
And I would agree, you don't need to come to this meeting because it's something that hasn't gone through any other levels, so.
I've gone back and forth with some of the staff, some of his teachers, and like, he's complaining now, he does not like school, he wants to quit when he's in 10th grade. And several of his teachers have heard him say that. And they're trying their best to work with him today. He came swarming through the door. I couldn't even talk to him, he was so angry. And he's only in 6th grade. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Any other public comment? Last call? All right, we're going to jump on back to our agenda, which puts us at standing committee reports. Admin and finance, Hank.
Well, I'd like to move the manifest of $2,000,47,759.24.
Do I have a second?
No.
Excuse me. Right, Jen?
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead and run you the rundown.
Sure. Some of the highlights are payroll, $545,000. Payroll taxes, $168,000. Health benefits, $484,000. Excuse me. Unemployment, $24,000. Workers' comp, $34,000. In special ed, we have Crotchet Mountain for $61,000. Excuse me. Eckhart Youth Offense for $27,000. And the lighthouse for $19,000. And other little items are heating oil, $31,000. Trucking for the tech school, or busing if you will, $5,100. Regular ed, $95,000. Payments to Icon, $76,000. And, can't even read my own writing. A payment to Vandecore for the telephone installation, $12,000. Those are the biggies.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right.
What's by con?
That's the, uh...
The copier lease?
Copy or lease, business leases.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion as presented? Ginny, are you for, against, abstain? You're for. That passes the 7, excuse me, 700. Okay. Any else that you had to go over and add in today? That was it, Hank?
We ran out of time.
No, that's it. Okay. As always, next time. HR, all right?
HR, most of our policies are down below when new business. Our next meeting is actually not until March 14th. We get February off.
Okay. TNC?
We didn't meet this week. Next time we meet is February 7th, and we're meeting early to accommodate the town commemorative. One new thing is we're working on a GTV show, fill up myself, Stacy. It's in the works, and hopefully we'll get it done in the next few days. We're still conceptualizing. As always, if anybody has any feedback for us or whatnot, always welcome the ideas from the board.
You should note that our article didn't appear in this week's Gofftown News. They said there wasn't enough space, so they pushed it out a week. So that's why you see us not on the regular schedule of being in this week in Gofftown News.
Thank you.
And we will have another article due Monday, so we'll have to own that one.
If we know the topic isn't, then who are we assigned to?
We didn't assign it.
We don't have it yet.
It's going to be about budgets.
Okay. All right. Curriculum and education. I don't think you've had a meeting since the last one, have you? Can't remember?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, I was sick, I didn't attend it, that's right. That's why I don't remember it.
There was a change in program studies. It was a language change. Something I don't have it with me, but it changed no program. It simply was a re-emphasis, and I'll be, forgive me, I can't even point you in the direction of it now. Here is what I will ask. MC, you don't have it with you, do you?
Don't have it with me.
Okay. Can, it's up on, the program of studies is up on the web, right? On our page?
The current, not the draft.
Okay.
This was the conversation that we had around defining study halls?
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It simply sought to give both students and instructors clarity around what was going to occur in study halls. So there's no substantive change, and it was simply an effort to codify practice and moving ahead in terms of how study halls are being used. Gary Gerlman came and did a presentation on the current state of technology. The question that I had for Gary at the end was, "So if we, if the budget were cut based upon the areas where it could be cut, how would that impact technology?" And he came up with a very thoughtful way to communicate the impact. He illustrated technology in our schools as a three-legged stool. Hardware.
Three-legged.
All right, a tripod. You're right.
Being the technology.
A three-legged stool, a tripod. But looking at how those individual supporting structures hold up the program, hardware, software, people, resources. We've got a nice primer in terms of looking at what our hardware resources are and the people necessary to support those at the different buildings, and when you look at the aggregate amount of technology that we have in this school, and look at the per-person number of pieces that need to be dealt with, where, my recollection is the number was 425 per person. The standard is closer to, in the 150 to 200 range. So to pull resources away from taking care of and maintaining our technology would simply mean that we couldn't operate all of the technology we have. And at a time when we're doing, a majority of the work that we're doing is data-driven analysis, be it testing, be it using the resources in classrooms, it simply doesn't make sense. And given the, what we need to do to support technology in the schools, cables, systems, routers, et cetera, et cetera, and I'm quickly getting outside any expertise that I have about technology, it's simply, what we'll begin to do very, very quickly is to decrease our ability to take advantage of the technology that we do have. So we aren't talking about maintaining, what we're talking about is having to shut down use of some of the resources that we've already invested in. It won't even be keeping level if we remove resources from the system. Also...
Can you, resources, are you talking people or are you talking...
People.
Okay.
Also, when you look across, we've done a really nice job of moving things from the high school to the middle school to the elementary schools to Glen Lake. It won't take very long for that bottleneck to start backing up in terms of age. Notwithstanding the fact that technology does change very quickly, we have not changed much of the assets that we use anywhere near as quickly as change is occurring in the field. It was a compelling presentation. I suspect that I'll probably pull some slides out and run into deliberative session so that, and maybe I can get Gary to Cliff Notes his presentation. It was very instructive and informative, and it sort of looked at how integrated technology is in all areas of our lives, our work lives, personal lives, and our school life. It's not something that we do our students a service by diminishing. Can I also, can I go on to a different area as well?
Sure.
I also attended the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Really interesting meeting. Nowhere near as volatile as some have been in the recent past. There weren't a lot of new things that came before the association. There were a couple, there was a presentation, and a very interesting presentation, talking about Evergreen, because you got lots of different people at the table who were talking about dialogues that they were having. And unfortunately, we, you know, in some respects, districts or administrative units really sort of exist in silos, and it was interesting to be in the same room and talk about what people's conversations were like at the bargaining table, and the kinds of things that people were trying to accomplish at the bargaining table to address Evergreen, the implications of Evergreen, and how it impacted everybody sitting at the table. Senator Bragdon, the President of the Senate, was also there. Here's the great news. We're probably going to get about the same dollars that we got last year. No more, no less. There are constitutional amendments out there.
That can take effect for the following year.
Yeah. He refused to talk about House bills, so despite the fact that everybody wanted to talk about HB 391 and arts, music, and technology being removed from the province of the Department of Education and being removed from things that are required, he said, "Well, that's in the House, I really can't speak to it." There will be continuing effort to try to define adequacy. He didn't speak specifically to where he thought that was going to go. And we talked a little bit about retirement. There will be a continuing effort to deal with the retirement system. There are going to be some long-term and short-term approaches. One of the things that came up was that it's likely that people, either districts individually or the legislature, will try to deal with situations where people are really pushing up their last three years of earnings. The easiest illustration of this is somebody who can do duties.
For a staff.
Yeah, for a, for a police department. And they can go out and work an enormous number of hours during their last three years, which really pushes up their retirement and isn't necessarily reflective of their re-journey generally. So he said he didn't think there, he wouldn't be surprised that there was a tension to that. There may be some more, some increased cost sharing, which he, as a member and chair of his school board, doesn't like any more than the rest of us. And we had a, an entertaining and nonetheless interesting overview of the bullying statute. Dean Egger was at his best. And I think that the NHSBA recommendations are pretty thoughtful. They gave a little feedback as well. It was an informative meeting. It was interesting to hear people talking about some of the things that we're talking about. One other thing that I left with and will continue to think about, I wish, I wish many of the folks in our community could have been here, was the Macenic District was nominated for School Board of the Year. Interestingly enough, they, they and the district that they were a part of split up. They managed to do that successfully. They managed to build a new school successfully. They built a structure and made their community through a variety of different initiatives really part of what was going on in the school, in the schools generally, and got support at a time to invest in public schools and their community that seems surprising given where we generally believe we are economically. And probably the greatest thing of value was, it kept on getting repeated over and over and over again, for me, and I won't speak for anybody else, but for me, was the recognition that civility has an important place at the table. And regardless of the fact that we may not always agree, and we may approach things differently, that at the end of the day, we're all professional people, we're all human beings, and civility is really important. That was my takeaway from it.
Right. I'm going to interrupt you real quick. I told Sue I'd try it a little while, see if line lines were available to get her to drive.
Thank God, because I would have put her to sleep.
And it's still not. I'm also going to allow Jim Raymond to join us, our moderator, Jim Raymond, so that we can take a few minutes and prepare for the deliberative session. You're welcome to sit anywhere you like, Jim.
I told Stacy I'd be here at quarter past, I lied.
That's okay.
If my profession allows me to.
We won't share what profession you're in, then.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you for letting me.
And then on a statement, I wonder?
I wanted to go over and find out from you what, what's going to happen at the meeting, not in terms of outcome, but what was going to come forward procedurally. We're going to be in the, talking to Stacy, we're going to be in the gym this year because we were at capacity last year. And they don't want us to have to pick up and leave. Went over capacity. We haven't been in the gym for a few years, but if you remember in the good old days, I thank the members, the cast of thousands there. It, the, you have to manage the crowd a little differently in a big hall, but we're going to meet on Thursday to go over that, just the logistics of it. Last year, there were some secret ballot requests. And we, we thought quite a bit about the procedure to speed that up. And I've talked to the lawyers at the municipal center, local government center, at the moderators workshop on Saturday, and they've confirmed what I always thought, that we're not subject to state election law in deliberative session voting. So you don't need, for example, a lock voting, a voting box, ballot box. You don't need to run people through the checklist. You just have to create a system that's fair. Many towns, including some of our client towns, your shoebox is passing up and down the aisles for written votes. I don't think we'll do that. But we're going to use the voter cards again and then bring people up. And I think we'll, if we have to, I hope we don't have any secret ballots. But if we do, we'll have multiple lines move it through quickly so we don't get these hour and a half delays. And I thought if we had like four voting stations and everybody has their card and we'll just have people check them off, we can run through. Fred Platt will be my moderator again. It's useful to tell me everything I'm doing wrong and step on quiet. Are you going to have the high school chorus again this year?
They're just going to do the anthem. They're not going to do a separate song.
Okay. So will they be on stage?
My gut is they would probably be on the floor.
Okay. Okay. You're going to have awards, the recognitions?
Yep, we have two Dream Keepers and two cornerstone awards.
Make sure you give an explanation. Don't be in too much of a hurry to just award them. Tell people what it's about because remember, a lot of people don't know what you're talking about. And even those who heard it don't remember. So take your time. This is to reward people.
We have to review it every year to refresh our memory.
Yeah, and I try to set the stage for you, but you know, describe it a little more. What do you anticipate for warrant articles at this point? It was just my talk to Stacy, you weren't sure.
You have the budget. You have up to $200,000 to be put into the Bartlett renovation fund. We have, we have to decide tonight if we're keeping that on there or not after the Budget Committee vote.
Support staff contract?
Oh, support staff contract for GESS.
Okay, so that's, that's a...
The GESS contract's a one-year contract, and it has a tax impact of an additional $8,703. So if we were to review how much time the Budget Committee spent on it, I wouldn't expect that probably the public is going to have a lot of questions because the Budget Committee certainly did not have a exorbitant number of comments or questions on it.
Okay, but that's, that's a collective bargaining?
Yes.
Where are you in the contract negotiation? Are you, have you finished?
Yep, we finished and both sides have ratified it.
Okay. You and the Budget Committee are not in agreement as of now.
On the GESS contract, we are.
Okay, but on the other two, you're not. So.
Correct.
You'll be making a motion to amend.
Possibly. We have to discuss that tonight.
Assuming you, assuming you are, you'll do that. So you'll have your script with the names and you'll give me, like as you have in the past.
Who's going to make motions?
So I can read them or at least know who they are. Typically, I'll let you present your, make your motion, let you discuss it. Be mindful of timelines, though. If you're, I've always let the school board, certain people, not the other end of the table. I don't mind giving you time, but if I give you time, I have to give other people time. And you know, that's the problem. So, because I can't, I can't favor the school board as moderator. So if you're going to take 20 minutes, somebody else is going to take 20 minutes. And I will give you more time, but I can't give you infinite time. So you know, condense it. I think enough people went to the public hearing. People know what's going on this year. So I just ask that you, you be as brief as you can. And you can, you can assess the political attractiveness of what you're saying. You just have to watch, make the meeting run. I haven't talked to the Budget Committee yet. I typically do to see if they're anticipating further motions to amend. I don't know if you know of any, you know, last year we had you amended up and other people amended down, and then we ended up somewhere in the middle. And I assume you might go through the same process. I, I typically told people I'm going to allow a certain number of motions to amend, but not to delay, so I, you know, do that again.
And you don't allow amendments to amendments?
No, no, only one on the, one, I'm not smart enough to allow. I just think about more than one amendment at a time. So you make an amendment, we'll vote on it. There's somebody else who wants to amend, unless it's just a technical amendment.
Right.
Is it all substantive? No, I can't do that. Assuming we only have three warrant articles, you know, unlike the town side, that, you know, we dump truck and fire truck and pickup truck has its own. I'm anticipating a three-hour meeting. Is that realistic?
I think it is realistic. Especially, I mean, we're not going to do the performance because we're going to be in the gymnasium, so we can't do the performance as we normally do. So you get the national anthems. The awards shouldn't take too long. And I think you're right about the public has a better idea of what's available and what we're asking for. So we probably can try to be a little bit more concise on the budget discussions. The GESS contract is a very simple, very minor changes. So that will certainly go quickly for presentation-wise. Same thing with the Bartlett renovation, if we keep it on there, it's going to be a very quick presentation.
But you know, if you go to town meetings, sometimes people will argue more over the $12,000 pickup truck than the $4 million budget.
Yeah, I was just talking about our presentation of it. I don't anticipate it to be the landmine, either one of those two.
Okay, good.
Because we are going to give a brief explanation. The Bartlett Committee will put together a brief explanation of what they're looking to do.
Okay. And you're going to have the handouts at the start.
Yes.
I just have to make sure I remember to pick up a copy this time.
We'll make sure we get them.
We can send it to you electronically, so you have it all in advance.
If I could, I have everything. I have some of my headphones.
Yeah, we can send it if you want. We'll send electronically who's going to speak to what as well. So you'll have that in advance.
Okay. Anything else that I need to know, landmines, I'm going to step on, you're aware of?
The only thing that's probably a little different is that we're going to ask somebody from the Bartlett Renovation Committee just to give a brief synopsis of where they are and what the accomplishments is, how, what's expanded and what's occurred over this past year for developments on it.
It's actually the elementary renovations.
When are you going to do that?
I'm sorry, what?
When are you going to do that?
We have?
I have it kind of on the agenda right after the Dream Keeper and after the awards.
Okay.
Diane McCarthy is going to do that, and it's literally going to be one to two minutes, we said. We just, it was a warrant article we had last year to do the, an RFP for engineering architectural studies. So we just want to let the public know that we're doing that.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I create rules that you have to identify yourself when you speak and even fill your subject to those. Because I'm picking on filter. You know, don't, don't assume anybody remembers your name more than two minutes because I won't. So please identify yourselves. I'll call on you. I'll try to come back to you. What I also will do is try to protect you. It's not a cross-examination, so when people ask questions, you know, we want to hear from Mrs. McKinnon, what she thinks about such and such. I'm going to say, "No, that's not a proper question. You may ask a general question, and people may answer if they wish, but they're not compelled to," which also means that you're not compelled to answer. And you don't have to. Or you can say, you know, we'll, we'll let you, we're going to look for the answer and we'll see if we can come up with it. But don't, you know, I'm going to, my job is to protect you from people asking inappropriate questions. It's not, not stump the chumps, no. But sometimes I can't. You know, sometimes you, you need to, you have to have a political ear on when you need to respond or not, and let me know. But I'm never going to turn to you and say, "Mrs. McKinnon, you've been asked a question. You have to answer it." I won't do that.
Thanks, Jim.
But maybe, maybe I will. Everybody else, they won't. So, but you let me know if you want to, and I'll give you the opportunity. But you can also, I'm not going to let people ask a question, give an answer, ask a question, give an answer. I mean, people batch it. Tell us all your questions, and then we'll see if we can answer them.
Yeah, that would be easier for us. And we anticipate having our attorney at Kaplan there.
I talk to him at the Y regularly on plodding the meetings. I'm joining workout machines. That's pretty much all I have. You know, I'll meet with Stacy and Jerry on Thursday. We're going to go through the logistics of setting up the hall and seeing how that's going to work.
And I'll leave these two with you. These are the, just the two cards we've used in the past. If you want any revisions to them, so that on Thursday you can bring them.
They will obviously be color-coded.
We use just a register voter card, and we print them in color. And I guess so, if there's things you want changed on.
Yeah, the only thing I'm going to ask on the voter card, I have to have a color that I don't remember what last year's color was.
Yeah, we're actually just waiting for the town to decide on their colors to make sure we're different this year as well.
Why don't you decide first and tally down?
Well, because they called us and says, "We'll let you know what color." So, you know, so I'm going to give them that opportunity.
I'd like to have a place where people take their names as we talk because I want, people lose them, we discover. We find them scattered around at intermission or whatever. So I want people, and plus, when they come up to, if there's a written ballot vote or written vote, we're going to, they're going to show their card to whoever's sitting there, giving them the ballot. If they have the name, there's at least some check without doing a checklist.
Okay, we can do that.
So I just have to, you know, signature something. And then have a bunch of these with maybe either different colors or...
Different colors for different votes.
Ballot vote number one, ballot vote number two, you know, add in for an item.
Probably just change the color on all of them.
Yeah, what we usually do is just make a bunch of copies.
Either way.
We have a bunch of copies.
So I think we already have a bunch of different colors.
So you distinguish by color which vote it is.
Yep, that's what works.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you for letting me come for you.
And we'll see you on the fifth.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Phil. I'm being, being with a punching bag tonight.
I'm coming as a mute, though.
We haven't even decided if we're letting Phil talk yet, Phil talk yet, so. We might just make Diane do everything.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Excellent. All right, we're going to jump back into our reports, and Superintendent Buckley is next on.
Okay. Other than snow days, I've been doing snow days and then rescheduling meetings from snow days and then scheduling them to snow days and then rescheduling them to other snow days. It was a fun week. Out of four days we were supposed to have school, we had school one and a half. So it was an interesting week where I'm watching one and a half.
Oh, we never had a holiday.
It was a four-day week. I'm watching the weather on Wednesday, not sure what's going to happen. It's either going to go off and we're going to get nothing or we're going to get more than a foot. And they're projecting Wednesday into Thursday, so questionable about that. So keep updated, I'll bring the word out. Just as a follow-up to Philip's, the workshop he went to on Evergreen, it did Senate Bill One. It's on fast track to go through, was passed through the Senate. This is to repeal the Evergreen clause. It passed through the Senate nineteen to five. It's now moving to the House Labor Commission Committee. And I haven't heard about a hearing date for that. So they are looking to move that right through. The big questions are, it's repealing the law. We're just not sure whether it means it's repealing it for contracts that have been passed, contracts that are in the process of being passed. So there's lots of pieces to that puzzle we're not really sure about, so.
From my understanding, it's House bill, the House is going to have their own separate bill as well. It needs to be reconciled with the Senate.
Stacy, has anybody figured that out yet? Is anybody trying to figure it out, who's covered by that?
I, I don't know. All I'm getting is what has been public. And so I think there's just the, I think the questions are a lot of those questions, which is, what does this mean? Because the bill really just repeals the law.
Yeah, it didn't define who's going to be covered.
As it, as it flushes out, there are three sorts of situations that could occur. There could be a contract that transcends the entire thing. Okay, in which case that contract would not be affected at all. And anything you negotiated in the future would be under the law. There are contracts that ended and were negotiated under Evergreen. Okay? As it stands, if all they did was repeal the law, it looks as though those contracts would be covered and would be subject to Evergreen until a new contract was negotiated.
And Evergreen does, if it passes, doesn't go into effect till next January, right?
That's correct, most likely.
So any contracts that are done between now and January?
But they could also, the legislature could grandfather it. They could make it retroactive. I mean, we just don't know what they'll do with it.
And as for the GESS contract, there is no step increases or cost limit reasons. So there's nothing that could be affected under, with the exception of the longevity pay. It's nothing that would be subjected to the Evergreen clause for us. So there's really not any exposure to us at this point.
Okay, just going back. We had our Title III compliance monitoring, which is ESOL, English speakers of other languages. We just got the final kind of draft report. I'm bringing this up because one of the recommendations they have in the report is the hiring of an additional staff person. And so clearly with budget cuts, I'm not sure where that's going to happen, but that is on our radar. Mary Claire and I have had conversations and are keeping that on our radar as something to continue to investigate and look at. On another side, kind of going along with compliance, we got notice today that both Glen Lake and Maple Ave were up for their annual five-year accreditation kind of process through the Department of Education. We got conditional approval on both of them because we didn't submit the fire department reports. They were done. Fire department didn't submit them, so we're submitting them. So Maple Ave should be fine. Glen Lake should be fine on that. The other thing we were, we asked for alternative compliance for meeting the standard of art, music, gym, and health. We said that they're integrated programs and therefore are, we don't do a pull-out in art teacher or music teacher. And so they cited us for that. So Mary Claire, myself, and Leslie are going to meet this week and talk about what that really means, what our requirements are. Because according to the state, we're required to provide them PE by certified PE teacher. And I don't really know what that means because I don't know any other preschool kindergarten program that provides those kinds of services. So we're going to meet and talk about it and figure that piece out. But I just wanted to let you know where we are. So the fire inspection piece will be set, so Maple Ave will be set. But we need to investigate this other kindergarten question and piece. So that's kind of in the works. As Jim said, I'm, we're meeting on Thursday, him, Jerry, and I, to set, to look at the setup for deliberative and how we want to do that, make sure we're all set. If you haven't seen, I don't know if everybody gets the Town and City. I'll pass it around. This is the magazine put out by Local Government Center. But we had a, we are the feature, one of the feature articles, I say nineteen, for our anti-bullying program. Believe it or not, we are ahead of the curve when we're looking at it. So they did a nice article. We have a lovely picture. That's where else you can all see it. Jen Gillis, the Assistant Principal of the Middle School, and I also did a workshop on Thursday to a group through the Manchester Professional Development Center. It was about 200 teachers, guidance counselors, administrators on kind of how to start thinking about implementing a bullying program and how to think about implementing curriculum and let's think right along the lines with what you're already doing and getting it going. And so, because we've kind of dove right in and got some grant money to do it, we've been trying to share that information through the grant money that we got. So that was a great workshop. I think it was well-presented. They asked us to come back and do another one at their next workshop. So I thought that was really positive for the things that we're doing here. I did want to let you know, we do have a student teacher. Didn't make it on the agenda, but so I thought I'd bring it up. We have a student teacher in...
Basically an internship.
Yep, it's Joshua Barabolt, who is coming from the New Hampshire Institute of Art. He's going to be working with Donna Karolian, I don't know his last name, and Eva as well. I'm just looking to see if that's what it said.
Eva Lane.
Eva Lane, yep. And they're going to be, he's starting in the winter of 2000. I think he started, he's starting this week. So that's just an FYI because we have to notify you of that. So he is there. I also wanted to let you know that we have several members of the first robotics team that we kind of go with Manchester. Manchester West High School is going to, on a three-day trip to Hartford, Connecticut for a robotics competition, March third, fourth, and fifth. We, right now, are expecting four students to go with the team. And it's a Manchester-sponsored team, but since it's Gufftown students, I wanted to let you know. I don't think it's anything you have to approve because Manchester kind of owns the team. But if anybody had concerns or thoughts, just let me know. But it's a great opportunity for them. The robotics program has had lots of great publicity, and I think it's a great, great thing to kind of engage our, our students. And I'd almost love to see a program start here. If I could get that moving. If I could get that moving. Just a reminder, we have our next Pancy article due on Monday.
Thank you.
That was all I have right now.
Well, we're gonna jump right to the draft 2011, 2012. I think you have a handout for that?
I do, I have.
Have there been any changes since the last draft that was sent electronically?
There has. The, no, we-
We had eight snow days.
Yeah. The last calendar you received had a November eighth, I believe it was a teacher workshop, it was a teacher workshop day-
For federal elections.
For elections, but we don't have any elections on that day, according to everybody we've talked to.
That would be true, it's an idea.
Yes, so we have moved the teacher workshop day to the beginning of the school year so that in Goffstown, similar to Dunbar and New Boston, we will have two teacher workshop days before school starts on Thursday and Friday with the students starting on the sixth. So that's the only change from the calendar that you saw the last time.
I have a question. On August 31st, you have it as a TW, teacher workshop day?
No, that's the first and second.
On August 31st.
Oh, that's New Boston and Dunbar.
Okay.
Oh, so let me clarify. New Boston and Dunbar are going Wednesday, Thursday, Goffstown's going Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
Because they don't wanna start. I actually asked them, the principals asked me to ask the teacher, teachers if they would be interested in going Wednesday, Thursday instead of Thursday, Friday and have a four-day weekend. So I asked the union, apparently the leadership said, "No, they were not interested." So I put Thursday, Friday, I'm fine. But I work either way. So that's why we went that direction.
An anticipated date, June 15th for the end of school, providing there's no-
No snow days, right. And so one of the things you'll notice on the bottom, in the past, we've had the clause about April vacation week, but with this calendar, because we have a ten days, which is required by law, we don't necessarily have to put that down there anymore because the reason we did that was, like, this year we only had like eight or nine days. By law, we have to be able to say we have 10 days available for snow days.
Is this new or does our calendar for this year have 10 days?
Our calendar doesn't have 10 days this year. That's why we have the clause about April vacation in case, I think we had nine days this year.
We also should note that we are gonna have to take day off sometime in January, February for the primary, which is yet to be said.
Right, and that would be, right now, we have it scheduled as a day off for our staff and a day off for students because that was originally, we were looking at as a teacher workshop day, but because we don't know when it's going to be, it's kind of hard to plan it. So we thought, let's front-end two days and do some better professional development before school starts. So that was our goal on that.
All right, I actually need to entertain a motion to accept that. Do you have a second, please? Philip and Kent, Kent seconded it. Any questions, discussions?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
How is the department on our vacations for this year?
We are on the right weeks.
Okay.
So we have, all the superintendents in the state have decided that no matter when President's Day is, it will always be on vacation the week after, whenever President's Day falls, so that we don't mess up the February.
Yeah, the ski resorts just don't like it when we do the same week as Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Just really overcrowded. Any other questions? All right, all in favor of approving the calendar as presented? And that passes unanimously 8-0-0 now.
And this is not related to this calendar, but generally. We've had four snow days thus far?
Three. We've had three. Last Wednesday, Tuesday.
We're about to have one.
Friday.
How many more do we need to have before we begin pushing out the end of the year?
I think we're at the 22nd. I think we still have like six or seven days before we're at June 30th. We're not in the last week of June yet. I think we're at Tuesday or Wednesday of the week before that, Wednesday.
Second to last Wednesday.
We hadn't dealt with it before. It would be nice to be ahead of the curve and understand what that's gonna look like if we deal with it again.
Yep.
And it worked so well the last time, I'm wondering what, given the DLE's current position on how you fulfill your time, if that's not a dialogue that we might think about having as an SAU?
In the school day?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could extend, I mean, technically, I think other than fifth and sixth grade at the middle school, I think you meet, even if you took days off, the hourly requirements. I think where we got in, what we, that would be kind of like waving days would be with the teacher's contract is where we ran into the SNAPU last time of having teachers work professional development days for those other days.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at the calendar generally and if we have some flexibility about how we accomplish getting, meeting our instructional needs, you know, maybe it's time to at least begin exploring what sort of flexibility we have and how we might change that for any variety of different reasons.
Yes. I'll know the weather as we-
Well, yeah.
We're not gonna have no more snow days.
Back to you, March.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, great. The 2011 warrant signing article, we can actually do that while we're taking our break to go from public to non-public. Is there anything you wanna share on that right now?
We don't have a signed warrant article today.
Oh, okay. I know, I apologize. We are next Wednesdays. This is my memory. Next Wednesday, if people could stop by the SAU and sign the warrant articles, that would be great.
I think it's this Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
In a couple days.
This Wednesday or Thursday, we have to get them posted by the last day of the month. So this Wednesday or Thursday, we'll have them available. If you could stop by the SAU office and just sign them on either Wednesday or Thursday, then we can get them posted by Friday.
Oh, yeah, 30th is what I have in my calendar. So yes, it's this Wednesday that we need to stop by the SAU and provide them. So I apologize.
Yep, so we'll give you Wednesday or Thursday and we'll have the warrants done once you guys approve them tonight and then we'll have the default budget as well.
GHS field trip request?
I take it you're jumping past A.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I think I got me all my stuff. Hold on, I gotta find my field trip request.
Sorry, I figured that's the most hotly debated one, so let's get all the other work out of the way.
I'm looking for approval. It's just an overnight in-state field trip. It's a repeat for FBLA, March 31st to April 1st. It's 15 to 20 students. There'll be lots of wonderful chaperones. I went to the conference last year for a couple, for a couple hours and it was a very wonderful, well-attended conference, great representation from our students. They were fabulous. They got a couple of awards, so.
When is that?
When is it? It's March 31st to April 1st.
Where is it?
It's in Manchester. But they stay over because it's, they do all kinds of activities for them.
All right, failure to put a motion will automatically allow it to be reoccurring since it's a recurring one. Do I have any motions? Seeing none, you're very welcome to go. And also the future business leaders, I'd like to thank them because they are actually donating the time and money for the babysitting at our deliberative session as well as the budget hearing. So we're not using any tax dollars to provide the babysitting. It's all being generously donated by the future business leaders association of the school. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And now we have our policy first reads. Did you wanna run down them real quick, Lori?
Sure. So admission for non-resident students for JFAB. Just kind of tweaking the language could be, it was being read a couple different ways and kind of tweaked the language to try to make it say what we were actually trying to say. So what one was next on more? Assignment of students, that's bringing up what was requested from the board of putting in that extra layer of coming to the board if they're not happy and kind of following the same plan we had with graduation. And public speaking at the board was kind of just addressing, clarifying a little bit that Gofftown residents speaking on matters to the school district. So pretty much that was the only tweak that we were having to go, so they're all rather small tweaks.
But boy, it took a while to get there, huh?
Yes.
I had a question about BDH that we're specifying Gofftown residents where some of our decisions affect New Boston and Dunbar. Are there priors or privileges?
By the area agreement, Dunbar and New Boston residents are allowed to speak at board meetings as if they were Gofftown residents. So the area agreement covers it.
Cool.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the area agreement does allow for them to attend any of our meetings as well as committee meetings and to participate but not have a vote in committees and they can do public comment at school board meetings.
I just wanted to make sure as I was reading this that this wasn't altering anything.
Okay, I actually have to reread it quick, but I didn't see anything in the first quick read. Okay, anybody else have any questions on that one or any of the other first reads? So these will come back to us depending if we have a second meeting in February or not. If not, it'll be in our first meeting in March, right after the elections. Elementary facility review committee?
This was just a conversation we had at the meeting. Right now, Diane, Suzanne Trembley, and Philip Pankos has kind of been the alternate. With Suzanne being out and sick, she hasn't been attending meetings.
I wanna say she actually is feeling better and she did leave for Florida last weekend.
Oh, good.
So she was feeling better.
So the question just came up was, kind of Diane is the only board representative at this point and just because we're moving into a really critical phase, we're now, we're waiting for, we have the RFP out, we're meeting on March 15th for our next meeting to look at the RFPs and go try to choose a final person to bring back to the board. And I guess we were feeling like there was a disconnect with just Diane from the board level of the process and what was going on and so we didn't know if there was a different board member who wanted to get, or Philip wanted to get more involved in the process.
To be perfectly honest, I really just, because I knew Sue was there-
Yep.
And the agreement that we had when we started was, if you can't do it, let me know. And it totally escaped me that, oh yeah, she's sort of been not complimentous.
Yeah.
And she's hoping to be fully recovered by the time she comes back from Florida.
Yeah, it's just we're moving into a, so if you think you can come-
Sure.
We're doing them at 4:30, that's it. Okay.
On the ides of March?
On March 15th.
Yes.
Those are the ides.
They are the ides.
And so we're gonna start to look at the RFPs, so we just, we wanted to make sure there was enough board representation to bring this stuff back.
I'm gonna bring Cassius and Brutus with me.
Okay.
I must say, if anyone else wants to volunteer from the board as well. Okay, thank you. All righty, do you have any track changes?
Yes, we just have one, so I didn't copy it. We have Jennifer Stanhope Prevee from Bartlett is moving from her master's to her master's plus 15. Just a notification.
Congratulations.
And I'll send her a card.
All righty, we're gonna jump back to draft warrant articles. I'm actually gonna take them a little bit out of order if you don't mind. We need to do several things. One, we'll have to make a motion to move all of the warrant articles to the deliberative session and then we have to vote on each one of them as to whether the board recommends or not recommends the warrant articles. And I'm gonna save the most hotly debated one for the last one. I'm gonna, Article One, obviously, we cannot have any discussion on. Article Four, which is the route renovation funds, the budget committee resolutely said 921, voting not to recommend. With, their recommendation was, they felt that in this tough economic time, it was probably better to use that money in our general fund budget. Their thoughts were, if we were to present this, they would, they felt that they should take $200,000 out of our general fund budget, because their goal was to level fund tax rates, would it seem to me at the meeting. That was the goal they were shooting for at the last meeting. And I just sent everybody the minutes from, and I apologize, they just pop into my email box, so I just sent you the budget committee meetings from last Thursday night. So I don't know where people feel about whether to leave that $200,000 or not. If we removed Article Four off of the warrant, that would allow us to show an additional $200,000 in unreserved fund balance for this year to apply towards next year's tax rate, which in essence helps to lower the tax impact.
You know, in fact, this doesn't really get taken off the tax rate, it goes-
It's unreserved fund balance, which is given back at the, well, during the summer.
When you go up to Congress.
Yeah.
This is evaporates.
Yes.
You have any idea what the net impact would be?
All right.
Diane's rate is, as he calculates, is seven cents per $100,000.
It's just a smidge over seven cents.
14 cents.
0.014, something like that? So yes, that would amount to between 14 to 15 cents per thousand. Hello?
I can't imagine taking away something that really doesn't change, but having said that, I think that it's a decision that is up to the voters in much the same way that the town moves some things out of their operating budget into warrant articles, which I thought was appropriate because it left the decision where it belongs. We aren't asking to spend more money, we're simply saying to the voters, if those dollars are left, would you like to allocate them to a future project?
Yes.
And I believe that ultimately, if they give us the discretion, they've told us what the maximum amount they'd like to have the district take out of any unreserved fund balance and move there.
That's correct. And I want you to know, at the budget meeting, I, whether to recommend or not recommend, I abstained from the vote. It was clear that it was gonna be a vote not to recommend it by the numbers, but-
Well, a vote not to recommend really does functionally make the decision for the voters. And I think we ought to at least give the voters the opportunity to make that decision. And if they say, "No, we don't want you to do it," then the de facto result of that vote, where the voters have made their choice, is to put it back into the unreserved fund balance and it will absolutely go to reduce the tax rate. So there's really not, I don't know that there's a disagreement there.
Okay. And just for clarifications for the viewers on TV, while we're asking to put the money into the reserve fund, we cannot expend it without coming to another full vote from the public, so just so you know that. Anybody else have any comments on this particular warrant article?
All right.
Sorry, I was just gonna, I tend to agree with Philip that you bring this to a vote. It's giving, the voters have every opportunity to say no, at which point it goes back, but it does give them a choice. And unfortunately, we do know that we are facing some expansion issues in our elementary schools and it seems like it will be easier for the tax rate and for the town over the long run if we are able to save, put a little bit of money away towards that. That's just my two cents.
All right, so I'd actually like a motion, whether to recommend or not recommend. Now the motion?
First have a motion to move it to deliberative session. Because you haven't done that one.
No. All right, I'll first take, I don't, technically, I don't think I have to, but we'll, we'll be the safe side, we will.
Then I'll put up-
I'll say a motion to move it to deliberative session. Thank you. Can I have a second? By Kent, all in favor of moving the warrant articles to deliberative session? And that passes unanimously 8-0-0. Then now Philip, I'll take your motion to recommend article, currently Article Number Four. Do I have a second?
I'll second that as well.
Any other discussions? All in favor of the motion to recommend? That motion passes 8-0-0. Excellent.
Do you wanna tackle who's gonna move it and speak to it at the moment now or?
Yeah, why don't we, while we're doing each individual one? Anybody like to volunteer to talk on that?
Sure, it's the shortest one, I'll say it in as few as possible words.
Okay.
I'm gonna borrow what Diane said.
So Philip, just for clarification, and we'll email this to you beforehand, you will make the motion at deliberative session and then you will speak to it. And who can second that motion at deliberative session?
I personally won.
Jenny Will?
This is the $200,000, Article 4.
Article 4. Article 3. Do anybody have any questions? This has, there's been one slight change on this, was the tax impact and the estimated increase. It was slightly lower than we originally voted on in the last meeting. The estimated increase will be only $10,020, with $8,703 coming from taxes, taxation. The other $1,317 comes out of the food service revenue accounts, which is a self-sustaining account. So just want to highlight that, that was a correction that we did do, and it was made before it went to the Budget Committee, so they did get the precise numbers last Thursday.
Can I also add the one thing? At your last board meeting, the number we gave you for this cost was $10,630. The actual cost was less, we had a, somebody notified us up for retirement, so we put in a lower salary, so that's why the change in that dollar amount is a little different than what we had discussed at the last meeting. Please anybody question that.
So can I have a motion to move that to deliberative session, please? By Hank, seconded by Kent. Hank, on this particular one, Philip, you were the lead negotiator, did you want to talk to this? Do you feel comfortable talking to this one?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so Hank makes the motion, Kent has seconded it. Did you want, did you want to second the motion at deliberative session as well, Kent?
Sure.
Excellent. And Philip will talk to it.
If we want to get somebody else's voice in, I will give, I speak into the other one.
Well, it's myself, you, and Sue Tremblay that was at the, at the, at any of the meetings, negotiation meetings.
Oh, no, no, I know, that, I think that makes sense, but if somebody else wants to speak to the...
Oh, Article 4?
Article 4, yeah, that's fine.
Does anybody want to passionately speak about Article 4?
No, we owe it to Jim, he can speak on both of them.
Oh, I owe it to Jim? Okay. Well, then, well, for Jim, I will.
Actually, because Philip just volunteered, did anybody else want to speak to Article 4 in front of the public? Great opportunity to get your feet wet, get ready for next year, when you speak more.
It's an easy one.
It's a very easy one. Hank will? All right, we'll let Hank speak to it. Article 1, we don't actually have to make a motion to move that to the deliberative session, I don't believe.
Do we need to vote on?
Who want to vote?
Yeah, I apologize to you. We'd like to vote on the recommend. Do I have any motions to recommend?
I'll make motion.
Make a motion to recommend, seconded by Philip. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of recommending the motion? That passes unanimously, 800. And I should say, the Budget Committee did vote in favor of the recommendation 1010. The negative vote, I'm not sure why, I don't think the person specifically spoke to why they were not recommending it, but a majority of them did recommend to move forward with the article. All right, Article 2, which is our budget. At the budget hearing, budget meeting, excuse me, Thursday night, the Budget Committee did ask some questions of the SAU and myself, we answered them, there was none that we had to come back with answers on. I think the primary thing that they had questions and focused on was accreditation, and they had questions about what could cause us to lose accreditation, was involved with accreditation. There was some talk that there should be a compromise between the school and Budget Committee, that the cuts of 2.375 million was too much, that it should be somewhere in between. Conversation went on to what would it take to level fund the tax rate, and that meant putting $983,000 and change back into our budget. And ultimately, that's what they voted to do. They voted, out of the 2.375 they took out, they put back 983,000, which level funded the tax rate. And in a moment, I'm going to ask Stacy as to what the difference is between our budget and their budget, it's 1.2 something, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Right.
There was also some discussion, Ray will have a number. There was also discussion at the Budget Committee, and a motion made and seconded to take another $3.6 million off of our budget below the 2.37, to in essence, to circumvent what I would say is the voters' right to raise or lower the budget accordingly, because they were basically playing with the 10% rule, that if they ordered a 3.65, the most we could ever raise it is back to the level funded tax rate. That motion probably died a furious death, there was some passionate argument on that at the budget meeting, and ultimately, that motion failed. Only two people voted in favor of it. So that's pretty much a quick synopsis of the budget meeting last night. And Ray, what's the difference between the Budget Committee's number and our recommended budget right now?
Round numbers, it's 1.4 million.
Yeah, do you happen to have the exact number?
1.392.
1.392, thank you.
I mean, there might, there might be some change on that.
What was that number, Phil?
1.392 million.
So in essence, where, do we want to agree with the Budget Committee's number? Do we want to stick firm with our budget and make a motion at deliberative session to raise it back up by that 1.392, so it's at our recommended budget? I think our current budget was a very, very lean budget, I think we asked for what we absolutely needed. I think it's a wonderful idea to try to level fund the tax rates, but in the last two years, compared to the town, we've taken significant cuts. As a matter of fact, two years ago, we actually lowered the tax rate in our community, which I don't think we've been given fair credit for it. But looking at the significant cuts we've taken in the last two years, I personally feel the number we came forward with was an extremely lean budget, and is an appropriate number to ask the voters to support in order to just sustain the current level of education, the current quality of education. I'm not sure where other people feel on that. Ginny?
Was there a conversation at that meeting about the number of people that stood up and spoke in favor of returning to our initial budget, or the last budget that we presented?
The budget hearing. Are you talking about the people that came and spoke at the budget hearing?
Yeah.
There was very little talk, there was some talk from people who says, I've gotten calls from people who don't want to support it, they didn't come out, they didn't have a chance to talk. My response back to that was, they need to, if it's just an anonymous person, how are we supposed to weigh that in on decision making? They need to come out, they could have sent emails to the, several people, well, not several, but a few people sent emails to the entire Budget Committee Board, both in favor and against, because they weren't able to come out. I feel that if somebody's not willing to come forward, put their name on the comments, I guess how can we provide weight to it? And I don't think they adequately discussed the fact that most of the people that came out and spoke asked to restore to the school board's number. I don't think there was a lot of discussion on that.
The question was raised at the meeting by a member of the Budget Committee, as to whether or not it was going to be addressed. And because in the mode that they were operating in, which is called deliberative mode, the mere asking of a question doesn't entitle the asker to an answer. That question was not answered by anybody. So it was raised, a reference was made, it was pointed out that the question was asked in the hearing, and it wasn't, it wasn't incumbent upon anybody at the table to answer or to respond in any way, shape, or form. Not that anybody could on behalf of the committee, because ultimately, it would be for the committee to decide. The question for us tonight, I think, is, are, is this board comfortable with the budget that has been prepared, that it represents a thoughtful plan for getting us through the 11, 12 school year, and is what the district needs to accomplish its objectives? Regardless of what anybody else feels, or whatever position somebody else is committed to, our decision is based upon what our goals as a district are, and what our needs are, and whether or not we believe we fairly articulated those needs and attached dollar values to those needs. Did we double dip in maintenance lines by having two different maintenance lines for each school? I don't think we saw any of that.
The answer was no, because you have, there was two different categories of maintenance.
Right. And that was, that was asked and answered repeatedly.
My thought is that at that, that was a meeting to listen to what the voters of our town wanted to do with our budget.
I understand, but...
And we heard, I mean, I heard 41 to 8, I think that was a huge majority vote, that the people there said that they would like us to continue the quality of education that we thought was appropriate for our students. And I quite frankly, get really irritated about all these people who count more, who sit at home on their couch watching TV, than the people that actually come to the meeting, spend their, what, 11:30 at night, we stayed there.
Beyond 11:30.
And they don't get credit for having done that, because, I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody realizes that the only people that are going to send something to guys' website are people who do not like the school side.
And by the way, somebody could very easily say, the people that got up and spoke at that meeting are people who's already supported the schools, it is not news. I'm glad they were there, I thought they brought some really interesting stuff to the table to say. This is not about convincing somebody to do something different, it really is, what's our position? And if it sounds like Philip's behaving a little differently, maybe I learned something at that meeting the other day. Are there questions about the number that we put forward?
Kent?
Keith, I think the question we've got to consider, above all others, is are we serving our constituency and our constituency or the students? Yes, we have to take into consideration what the Budget Committee feels is an important aspect of our process, which is the budgeting part of our job. But at the end of the day, we as a board, our mandate is to serve our community, and our community is our students. And I think that's the bottom line question we have to ask ourselves, is, excuse me, is does this number reflect adequately and accurately an amount where we can move forward and not lose any ground that we've gained in past years? And you made a good point in saying that, several years ago, a couple of years ago, we actually brought the tax rate down in Goffstown, while still maintaining a level of excellence in Goffstown that we've, that I believe our constituents have come to expect.
And that was the year before the RFPs came in, it wasn't the RFPs that...
That's right, that's right, we didn't get any, and that was all one-time infusion of money. That created a false, a false sense of security and a false sense of funding, that I don't believe we're going to see again. It created jobs that aren't going to be around after that one year, it created expansion continuance that was only going to last for one year. So that was all, that was kind of a fictitious, not really fictitious, but a very temporary band-aid.
Band-aid.
Band-aid to a, to a, to a long-term problem. So I believe that's the question we have to ask ourselves, is, is are we, are we responsibly providing for our, for our, our demographic, which is the students?
And I should add, at the Budget Committee meeting on Thursday, I asked them to put $222,000 into our revenues for next year, which is the federal money to save jobs. I'm hoping this board will support the fact that we're going to not, because we can expend that this year or next year, I hope this board will approve of spending it next year, so we can leave it in the revenue stream. So that's another thing to take into consideration, so...
I think, just a, probably a final comment, but I think ultimately, we're responsible for the education in Goffstown, and I think that the Budget Committee can make their decisions according to what they think is best, but I think when all, everything dies down and the money comes back, and our education process goes on for another year, whatever happens, it will be our responsibility. And so I think we really have to go with the numbers that we feel comfortable with, that will keep up our accreditation, keep up our technology, keep up the things that are going to be important to keep those accreditations and to keep our standards up.
Okay.
A question.
Sure.
So it looks like, at this point, off from default is about $300,000, right? Approximately?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
If we ended up with that...
Well, maybe just to make sure, can you, one question to make sure, because the administration didn't quite catch it.
I just didn't hear what you said.
The difference between what the Budget Committee has and what we have for default is approximately $300,000.
Yes.
Have we had an idea of what we thought that would entail, if we ended up having to be below default? Because I know we did kind of an exercise with the 1.5.
Well, yes. I don't, they have not, the administration has not specifically done that, because these numbers weren't even available until Monday, I mean, Friday morning to them, and it being a snow day, I'm sure they didn't even come close to tackling that issue on that.
No, I haven't looked to see what we would reduce for the default budget.
It would obviously probably encompass a majority of what we already looked at for a $1.5 million cut.
Yeah.
Because right now, with the Budget Committee's recommendation, we're looking at a $1.4 million cut. Default would be 1.7, so we'd have to add a few things to it.
To give you an idea, I estimated there's probably about $250,000 worth of kind of items, purchases, things like that, for students that are more consumables, that I would cut, and then you have the $222,000 in grants, so it's about $500,000 in there that, if I had to cut things, that's where I would go first. Anything beyond there, I think really starts, is either programming or staff. And those cuts would be, like, reducing the late bus again, reducing field trips, kind of going back to losing those things. It does include all the technology as well in that.
Question.
Yes, Hank?
How much can you increase the budget for next year's budget?
You can raise or lower by 10% over the recommended number from the Budget Committee.
Yeah, that comes to about $38,000.
I'm sorry, what?
And that comes to about how much?
$3.6 million.
Yes, $3.6 million, roughly.
Three?
$3.6 million roughly. You can raise or lower it by...
It was like 3.4?
You're thinking the total operating.
Okay.
General fund versus total operating budget.
All right, thank you.
So yes, it's actually the total operating budget that you can raise or lower it by 10%. The general fund budget basically excludes the federal grants and the self-sustaining food services.
Do we need to take action on this?
Yeah, I need to get a consensus from the board if we want to, if we want to stick to our number and make a motion to raise it back at deliberative session to our number. Diane?
I guess my thing is, is when we put our budget forward, I thought we were all very much in agreement that this was the lowest budget we could do.
That we should do it, at least.
That we should. I agree with what Kent said as far as our constituents being the students and our obligation to the quality of students. I also sat at that public hearing, that all of us did, and watched about 41 people come up and ask for the restoration of the school board's budget. In my experience, that was probably one of the best-attended public hearings in recent history. Certainly the best participated in, I can't tell you for sure previous years, but I know last year, we had, per the minutes, 10 people get up and speak in support of the Budget Committee's budget, versus two who got up and, you know, worked towards the, the school board's budget. So this was significantly different. And I think to turn a blind eye to the efforts of those people who, again, they took the time to come out, I think we'd be doing a disservice to our community and to the process.
All right, so I probably should, for the record, I'll probably entertain a motion to raise the budget back up by the $1.392 million, so that I know the majority of the board is supporting that.
Yeah, I would make that motion.
Could I have a second, please? By Kent?
I would like to, I don't want anybody who's watching this conversation to come away with the notion that the people at this table are not considering that we all pay taxes in this community, and that there are people who aren't at the table, even though, I mean, physically at the table, they are present at the table, because part of our process needs to consider that there are voters out there, and there are people who have to pay bills, and one of those bills is a tax bill. So, well, we have an allegiance to our end users, our customers, we're all stewards in this community. It's something that we have to do collectively, and we don't fail to consider that there are people out there paying bills, and that if their taxes go up because the cost of buying a loaf of bread, because we all paid 12 cents in 1960, and you can't buy that loaf of bread today, but the loaf of bread you can buy.
Slice?
Well, no, 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 it costs about three bucks, but the loaf's nowhere near as big as it used to be, I think. They keep on shrinking, but the price keeps on going up. But... But we've been mindful of that. And when we talk about having built an aggressive and a lean budget, part of the reason that we do that is because those voters are at our table. They elect us. To, to ignore their commitment to education as well as their concerns over paying taxes would not be fair to representing them.
And I should say, on the School Board, there are at least three members on this School Board, uh, excuse me, at least four members that don't have students in the school district. So they are representing, not everybody here at this table is representing their own children, so I'd like to bring that as a highlight, because several comments have been made that only people vested in the school district are voicing their opinions on the budget, so.
We heard people last Thursday who didn't have
Yeah.
Children in the school district.
Sure, we did, absolutely. Stacy?
I just want to point out, you, you can lower that by $9,000, Ray just reminded me. The SAU assessment was done after you had finished the budget, so in fact, there's $9,000 more in the budget for the SAU assessment.
So I actually need to have that exact number for the motion.
Okay, but before we, before we take a vote on the motion, is there anything else that could happen that would affect the number that we put forward between now and the time that we have to put that number forward? Anything else that could Any other prices, any other changes?
We don't have our
We don't, we don't have our health insurance yet.
We have our guaranteed max rate on the health insurance.
But we don't have our
So we don't have our rate specifically.
And so, and the rate won't
And sometimes it comes in just before deliberative session, sometimes it comes in after.
Okay.
You just don't know for sure.
But, but if, if a rate came in that was favorable to what we budgeted, that's a change that we could make
At deliberative session, if we have that number, yes.
So if we saved a couple hundred grand on our health insurance, we could go to the voters and say, look, we don't want that money anymore, you keep it.
Right, you can lower, you can certainly lower the motion.
If that number's available by that deliberative
Yeah, no, no, no.
We can certainly give the board a prize as we get closer of any of those changes.
So, Ray, would you give me the exact number, taking out that $9,000 on the assessment?
Yep. Your School Board's overall budget would be, operating budget would be 37,472,723 dollars.
And that's a dealt, a difference between us and the Budget Committee's recommended number at the moment? Taking out that $9,000 in the assessment?
Yeah, the difference would be
Take the time, I just want to have it on the record. Uh, Philip, will you actually change your motion to be to reflect 1.387,455, with the caveat that if we get our guaranteed insurance rate and it's lower than the guaranteed max, that we will reflect that at deliberative session?
Yes.
Kent, will you change your motion second to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. Anybody have a question on what we're voting on right now? I want to make sure everybody understands that we're just looking to vote on having the School Board make a motion at deliberative session to raise up the budget to, by 1.387 million and change.
Back to the original operating budget?
Correct.
Less 9,000.
Less, less than 9,000. Less than 9,000, and less any savings that we see on health insurance between now and then.
With the interest, yep.
Okay. All in favor of that motion? Against? No abstentions. That motion passes seven one zero. Anybody who abstains or speaks in favor is welcome to add a comment in for the record if they like.
Sure. I think everything is compromised, and when we first voted on the budget, I didn't have the default numbers, which did pique my interest on the difference. So while I wouldn't recommend what's there now, I don't think I'd recommend all the way up to the top, and would want to find a compromise in between.
Okay. That's very fair. Now, I need a motion to move Article two to the ballot. I have a motion by Kent, seconded by
To deliberative session.
I mean, to deliberative session, excuse me. We'll make that motion, a deliberative session, move it to the ballot.
That's a little Freudian
I'm just trying to skip the whole process, move right along, you know? Can't do that, we have to let the voters have their say at deliberative session. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Philip. All in favor of that motion? That passes unanimously. And now we have the, I need a motion whether to recommend or not recommend Article two to the voters. Do I have a motion? What would your motion be, to recommend or not?
To recommend.
Philip makes a motion to recommend, do I have a second? By Ginny? Any questions?
So, what are we recommending?
Here, what are we recommending?
Article two, we're recommending, well, right, no, actually, so I'm going to actually have to ask you, you're thinking reverse. We're looking to recommend or not recommend the Budget Committee's number.
That's right.
Because right now, that's the number that has to go into deliberative session.
Okay.
So I think you might have misunderstood.
I did.
So would you like to retract your motion?
Withdraw your motion.
And to withdraw your second, and then correct it, so that now you understand what we're voting on?
Yes. I thought we were, never mind.
No, yeah, we have to vote, we're voting on whether to recommend the Budget Committee's number.
We've already, we've already taken the vote on what we need
To do.
Right.
Now you're taking out your phone.
Whether to recommend or not recommend the current number that's presented by the Budget Committee.
I would ask one question.
Mm-hmm.
At the close of the deliberative session, the number
If it changes, we can readdress it.
And then, and only then, would we actually need to vote on it?
Correct. In other words, in order to change the recommend or not recommend number on, from the Budget Committee, or the vote from the Budget Committee or the School Board, it actually has to have had a change or at deliberative session.
But as I recall, one of the things that, that the moderator does when he reads is, he, he makes a statement about the vote on, of the Budget Committee and the vote of the School Board on each item.
Yes.
Right? Okay. If that being the case, I would vote to not, I would make a motion to not recommend.
Do I have a second to that? By Ginny?
Thank you for correcting me, I apologize.
It's okay, it was actually taking a little process through my mind, too, and also I'm thinking, wait a minute here. Any questions? All in favor of voting not to recommend the Budget Committee's number at deliberative session? And that passes unanimously eight zero zero. And let me just double check, make sure I didn't miss anything here.
Yeah, if you want to talk about who's going to move second and speak to that article at deliberative session.
Yeah, I'll speak to it. Anybody want to make the motion to, Philip will make it, who would like to second the motion at deliberative session?
I'll second it.
By Kent?
Okay, unless, yeah, get Diane, she can get in there.
Oh, we got Diane to talk. Diane's going to do a little presentation on the, I mean, on the
Second.
Elementary school renovation.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Right. The only thing I need to prepare for deliberative session is, and we can, you can mention it in non-public, but I'm going to mention now, the awards presentation. If anybody specifically would like to present one of the four awards that are going out, when we go into non-public, let me know who it is, and I'll gladly allow that person to make the presentation to anybody. So I'm just adding that on as a non-public item, so that we don't want to do it in public because we don't want to ruin the surprise of the people that are actually getting the And that is it. Any other legal business that needs to come in front of the board before we go into non-public?
When do we prepare for this? Do we have meetings to, I mean, to like get the PowerPoint up and running and stuff?
Yep, we'll actually, we have a date in February for the, no.
No, it would have to be
No, we have that date for after deliberative.
Ah, that's what we have, is that the deliberative session?
February's not awful.
No. We do have
So we can do a work session where some people who are actually going to speak to the articles, where we can kind of go over, put our eyes together and review each other's ideas for talking. Today being the 24th. Next Monday, the 31st, since I normally always keep Monday evenings open for the School Board, do you want to try to do it Monday evening?
No, I mean, can I come there?
Yep, oh, absolutely, anybody's welcome, we'll do it at the SAU.
What time?
How early do people want to show up?
9:30.
I can't do that late. I just can't.
Okay.
Five?
Um, Kent?
Five.
Monday is 31st.
Start whatever time you like, I've got a, I have a standing Monday delivery, so I'll be there.
What time?
I'll probably get there around 6:15.
Why don't, why don't we stay six o'clock? That'll give me, in case I'm running a few minutes late, six o'clock at the SAU office, and we'll start preparing our slides.
Yeah, and Ray and I are, Ray, Ray is working on the handouts that we did last year, and revising them and updating them, now that we have more solid numbers, we can do that, so. We've been working on it, so we'll have that as well, ready for that night.
Excellent. And I want to thank the public that came in and spoke tonight. We will certainly take comments that were made and public comment under advisement, so thank you. And I actually need to entertain a motion going in non-public to discuss personality issues as well, well, there's a second one that's going to be coming on there. And there was, that's it, just those two, as well as letting me know if you want to speak on a, an award. So can I have a motion? By Philip, seconded by Ginny, I mean, not Ginny, Jen had her hand up first, excuse me. Roll call to go into non-public? No, I don't have to be here, sorry. Yes, 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 all right, we're officially in non-public, we'll take a two to three minute break so they can break down the cameras, and we'll be right back.
[inaudible]
Philip, you know what he used to say in school, you bring enough for all of them?